General Assistant, the ordinance that we have in town.
Um. Can we? Can we make that change, Susan? Do you know off the top of your head? I had to put you on the spot.
I think that's done manually every year.
Mm-hmm.
I haven't looked at it in a while, but I know that.
There's no chance to be ordinance.
No, you just change.
Just change the numbers.
Numbers.
Yeah. Okay, second.
Uh, vote. Uh, let's see. No one here on the health officer. Uh, broadband? Now, is it, is it broadband or?
Digital.
Yeah.
Is it? Then I flip the coin.
Okay.
I lost, so I can go first. I'm gonna scooch myself up here so I can hear you guys if you can't hear me. Um, I wanna make sure I don't take waste of time because I wanna know where you are on this. Kerry has been helping us on short notice finalize this ballot initiative. It's gonna be presented public on November eighth election day. And uh, it's important that we make the decision of whether this language is meet you guys' needs as well as the town's needs, uh, so that we can get a printer and have it make, make it part of the ballot process. Uh, and I know Heather, uh, was gonna need you folks to let Heather know that this is something that the lawyers have laid in on pretty heavily. Uh, one of the concerns was we needed a petition. And in this situation, because if you guys order a, uh, that this ballot be here heard on November the eighth, you have the authority to do that. You may need a petition. So the lawyers have spoken on that. Uh, I don't know whether or not you've had a chance to read this thing, uh, so why don't I just ask that question? And then if you, if you had, if you have questions, I'll answer the questions. If not, then we can spend some time going through it if you'd like. How would you like to do that?
Awesome. I did, it's the ver- it's the version from today redlined.
Yeah, the version you want, the way you can recognize you're on the right version is take a look at the end of the page.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, five hundred and fifteen oh four eight.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that one should be the, yeah, so at the bottom, there's the debt limit. Which is, uh, something that we need to have in here that Kerry put in for us, uh, that, uh, and that would be the latest for you.
Sure.
Okay. So, uh, probably the thing that, maybe I'll just do it this way, the thing that, a lot of this is legal stuff, you know? It's more like kind of legal language that is used in these things. Doesn't necessarily make it easy for us, our neighbors to read it because it's legal. But, uh, uh, anyway, what it, what it does is, the principal thing that it does, that we work with the lawyers to make sure that it goes, is that nothing happens on this project unless we get the grant. So, which is, and, and you guys as a select board, that Bob uses as a select show person, will be the ones that certify that we've got the grant and that we've made, once you get, if we get the grant award we're looking for, what will happen is that, that, that the, uh, that the MCA people, the state people will have a bunch of paperwork that we have to complete and agree to accept the grant. And so you guys will be called upon to, to accept that grant. And then once you've accepted the grant, and then they come back and say, okay, you've met the requirements because I think we have to agree to have auditors to take a look at what we're doing, making sure they have the authority to come in and make sure that the bills that we're getting and that kind of thing are reasonable in light of what the project is because they don't wanna, you know, give us 1.8 million dollars to us, for example, and not have some way of checking that we're spending the money the way it's supposed to be spent. So you have to agree to that. And once that is done, then it would be up to Bob to certify that the grant has been, if the amount of money we need and it has been accepted by all the property parties, once that happens, uh, then we could start the, the process of actually building it. And of course, this is all predicated upon a favorable vote on November the eighth. The votes on November, it's not favorable on November the eighth and all this is, is moot.
Yeah.
So, uh, so that's probably the biggest piece of this, this thing. The rest of it is mostly, the only other thing I'll say about it is that if you haven't been following this thing as closely as Carl and I have over the last, the amount of borrowing is now 1.3 million. Previous to that, we've been talking about 3.2 million. And so borrowing is way down from what it was originally. Reasons for that. One is that at the time we calculated the 3.2 million, did not have a good understanding of the amount of money that Matrix, the company that we're working with, will be contributing to the project, and that's $2 million. So, uh, that takes the town's responsibility down 2 million. And, and now with also the way that this grant process is working and what the rules are now. Having said that, they were supposed to give the new rules out last Friday. They got delayed. So we're not gonna get the new rules until the end of this week. That could change some of this stuff. But, uh, I think we're pretty close to what, what it could look like. And, and 1.8 million is not an unreasonable request from a town like ours. Needs got money like in that range. So, uh, uh, we're pretty confident that, uh, that that's gonna be a reasonable request. But it's a competitive thing and a lot of towns will be applying for it. The past with these, uh, processes that, that they prioritize at the state. And last time about a half a dozen, I think it was eight towns got awarded and a lot of 25 that applied. And many of those 25 did not have a, the right information on the application. It was an imperfect application, so they were rejected out of hand. So, uh, we've got Mission, a consulting firm, working with us on that process. They know what they're doing and I'm pretty sure we're not gonna have run into that problem. And also Matrix is pretty good with this kind of stuff. So I'm pretty confident that, that we have a good shot at getting the 1.8. So it gets down to, uh, you know, if the town really wants this thing, I think we've got a pretty good indication of what the costs are gonna be and what the tax implications are and all that. So, uh, having said that, before I go to the next part of this, just on the ballot question itself, any, any questions or any concerns about?
No, it's good.
Looks good. Thank you, everybody, for our hard work on that.
Um, then, okay, let me, uh, go on to say that a part of this whole thing is this thing called the Mount Vernon Broadband Information Sheet. Have you seen that? Yep. This is a long document. I'm sure you probably haven't had time to digest it. Uh, this is similar to a document that we were passing out at the transfer station about some of the venues a month or so ago. But it's updated with this latest information. And it, uh, but the purpose of this obviously is to help our people understand what it means if they vote in favor of the, of the ballot, what it means to them in terms of the tax increase, what it means in terms of how much debt the town is gonna take on. And then it talks a lot about, about what happened, what are the hookup fees if you decide you wanna hook it up? What happens to seasonal people, what happens to the list situation? So there's a lot of information on this thing. And, and this is gonna be a handout that we will have at the transfer station starting on Saturday of this week. So what we'll have to do is we will have, uh, they'll have this copied, they'll make a rough copies, but we'll have, our people are gonna staff a table at the transfer station for the next two and a half weeks. Where, so that hopefully everybody in town will pass by, have an opportunity to get the handouts, ask questions about the project, uh, try to get a better understanding of things, and help them make a decision that makes sense to them in terms of how they think about their own situation as well as the town as a whole. Uh, so our objective is to, to be as transparent as everything. There's not gonna be any secrets about anything that, that's about the cost or anything on this thing. And give everybody a chance to, uh, understand it. And then on the 22nd of October, I don't know if you've seen what we're planning to do there. On the 22nd of October, we will have a public information meeting. That's gonna be on Saturday morning, 11, about 11 a.m. with the community. So I think it's the library that's having a breakfast that day. So there will be a breakfast and then we will have this, uh, public information meeting. And at that meeting, I, we're gonna have a video prepared that will, you know, a 15-minute video that kind of summarizes, you know, maybe a sports more simple format of this thing, uh, that people could see. And then it's open. And personally, here's the opportunity for those that, to advocate it or for or against the project. For everybody to have a chance to weigh in on what they like about it, what they don't like about it, whether they think the town should go forward with it or what. So, uh, so, so the, so the whole thing ties together in terms of, of the, we have to have this ballot thing that that's legal, that's required for us to do it. And then we have to have these communication things in order to, uh, give our people, uh, the opportunity to learn everything they can about it to make a decision on it.
And some of these copies right up here. And I put some at the library too.
Oh, great.
Put some of these at the library.
Yeah, we're gonna have those things around. I, I think what we gotta do with this deal is to, we have a meeting on Wednesday night that our total committee has not seen this yet. Carl and I have worked on it, Bill's worked on it, so forth, and, and the lawyers have taken a look at it. You're not, nothing offends them on this thing at this point. So, uh, so I think that we're ready to go with this. We just have to, there's a couple little minor things I have to change here on it. But, uh, we're ready to go. We'll finalize it on Wednesday. And then, uh, Ken and I are gonna be the guinea pigs on Saturday morning at the transfer station to have this stuff. And the people hopefully will stop by. We're gonna have a chance to talk to them and present this stuff and answer their questions when that comes in.
Once it's approved by the committee, it'll also be posted on the website.
Yes, yeah, we have it on the website. We're gonna send it out to the email list. We have 300 people who have given us permission to communicate to the email. They'll get it. One thing I'm not sure about, and I'm gonna need some help on this one, is the ballot. It, it's required that public notice be made of this ballot question 30 days before the vote.
Yep.
And I don't know what the notice requires. Does it require unveiling to everybody that gives the language?
No. What we need to do is give this, the slugboard needs to give this to Heather.
Okay.
And she needs to do her work to get it onto a ballot.
Okay.
And then we don't have a local ballot right now, so this will be the only thing on the local ballot.
Okay. Now, do you need to, to, to do something to communicate the language to the ballot, to the people ahead of the call?
And, oh, it gets posted.
Yeah.
Um.
With the, yeah, it'll get posted with all the other, uh, election.
Posted, what's that? They posted on?
It'll be, uh, all the areas in town where we post, physically post ballots.
Does that get the job done? You guys like as far as getting everybody's aware of this?
No. But it's all legal.
It's all legal. So legally, well, of course, we're gonna be at the transfer station. We're gonna be kind of noisy about it, so maybe people will stop.
That's actually the best thing to do. Ever since people stopped reading paper, paper newspapers, it's hard to get.
Yeah.
Information out and stuff.
Yeah, I understand.
So you'll have a transfer station, but you'll have some here too?
Yes, you should put some up here too, is, because this is the final week of making payments on that taxes. So this is probably gonna be a busy week for the girls.
Well, there's written, there's three documents that we're gonna have at the transfer station table. One is the ballot question itself.
Yep.
The second is the sky.
Yep.
Which explains everything. And the third is this document that we've sent out a lot to a lot of people already, which explains why consider fiber to the home? What are the advantages of fiber to the home? Uh, and what does it do for you?
Yeah.
Uh, and so, so those will be the three things we pass out. A lot of people have already had them, so I hope the people will stop by, ask questions. So I've, I've frankly gotten more questions in the last five, at the last day than I have through the six months.
Oh, you're seeing it on TV.
The first, the first stuff that we sent out just a few days ago stimulated some interest in. So I think that, uh, and some of the questions, you'll say, why are you doing this? You know, it's not like everybody said, hey, let's do this. I mean, this is people asking legitimate questions about the cost and whether this is worth it. And, and those are all legitimate questions, so we are anxious to engage with everybody about those issues. And, uh, so that's kind of where we are. So I guess what all I need from you guys is to sign off on the ballot initiative and tell me that you're on the right track as far as the communication, then we're good to go.
No, it's a meeting of the normal length, that's the time.
It's gonna be 11 a.m.
So we just need to vote.
To approve.
Approve this, this ballot question and we'll give it to, uh, I can give it to Heather tomorrow. I can actually put it on her desk.
Yeah. If there's any questions from Heather about, there's the lawyer, our lawyer Amanda Mead, I don't know, I don't know her, but she, she's been very helpful to us. But she suggested you talk to, you'll Google Bob, go directly. Petition is not required. I think she's worried about that.
No, she knew of that. As long as it's, it was not required by us.
Yeah, yeah.
Do it.
Yeah. And, you know, anything help, help that you guys need. I mean, one of us can go and help work with Heather on this thing.
Right.
If she needs any help. I mean, this is a big, kind of a big deal and, and we're willing to help any way we can, either with Heather, Kerry, or anybody that needs it in the town because you guys got a lot to do.
Yep.
Wonderful. Thank you for all your work getting this here.
Oh, I move that we accept the, uh, the article put forth by the broadband committee to, uh, to give them to Heather as a vote at the eighth election.
Second.
Yeah.
Vote.
Okay. Well, I didn't, I hope it doesn't take too long because Ken's got a couple of things to talk to you guys about.
Is this on broadband?
It is.
Okay.
The, just for the, the record, the Digital Equity Working Group is part of, it's a subgroup of the broad. So I also wanna say that the digital equity is actually somewhat independent of broadband in that if the broadband infrastructure part doesn't, um, happen, the digital equity can still happen.
Allowing people that don't have the money to get computers, can get the help with computers and stuff like that.
Yeah, okay. It starts off at the premise that broadband dollars is here. And the issue really is to remove the barriers to effectively use. So to that end, we've been working for a year or so with the National Digital Equity Center, which is your name. Uh, and Susan Corbett, who would be happy to come and talk with the board if they saw that. And digital equity is a part of broadband, uh, strategy almost anywhere, uh, either in Maine or nationally. Um, so it's, it's a realization that it's not all just about network. It's also about devices. It's about public access to devices, things like hotspots. Um, and it's about training. And the good news is, uh, there's, and I won't go through what's in the report because I don't think you'll listen to all of that. But, uh, there, there is opportunity to lead each of the four cornerstones of the digital equity plan. So what I need today, and I'm, I'm sort of leading this part of it with Susan and Bill, basically. Um, and help me fill in the gaps, Carl, because you've been here all the time. Um, so the first ask is, is quite, uh, technical insofar as, so we're looking for $65 from, uh, the ARPA funds so that we can get membership at Maine Philanthropy Center. And the reason for that, of course, is that all this is gonna be funded incrementally by grants. Small grants, a lot of little grants rather than a big, big, uh, project like the First Part Bar Initiative. So that ask is, is on the table. I'm also here, of course, to answer any kind of questions, uh, that you might have or suggestions that you might have as far as moving forward with what's in the plan, which are three pilot projects. Uh, one pilot project is with the library and the, the buzzword on that one is the Digital Navigator. It's essentially a specialist who can act as, uh, an instructional developer and also a tech support person to the town as well as to citizens. So that's what we're in negotiations with.
Hello.
Um, what we're in negotiations with the library about and, um, say that one again. What is, it's called a Digital Navigator. It's essentially a specialist who works on connecting the free courses, uh, through federal monies. The National Digital Equity Center offers free instruction and free devices to, uh, people who qualify. And so there'll be a onsite coordinator basically in town, uh, who would do that. So that's, that's, that's the first pilot project. The second is with Maine General. And it's a matter of targeting subgroups specifically, seeing two functions. One is telemedicine and the other is, uh, in-home safety devices, which I think could be helpful to the agent in place group as well as doing what we can to help people not only deal with safety issues, but also have a responsive technology in the house for that. So pretty excited about that. Hope with Maine General today. We're meeting again later this week. Hopefully we'll be in there for the projects. That's what we're going for.
Great.
Um, and then the third one is the actual, uh, National Digital Equity, Equity Center's, uh, free courses. Essentially getting those connected to the main citizens is what we're all about on that third pilot project. So those are the first three and, um, I don't wanna rattle on, uh, sort of questions or anything I'm missing, Carl.
No, I think it, those are the primary goals for the pilots. Yeah.
I, I'm just wondering, uh, I know somebody else had, um, a Maine philanthropy center membership. And I'm trying to remember who. I'm thinking it was through the CQC, but I, I can't remember because it's not something that, that you would use lots of, wouldn't miss to share it if we have any other group that has memberships.
Any vote that floats is fine, but let me note that the, uh, the plan, the geography, has about six budget lines in it. And we're hoping to do a grant for each one. So that means a lot of grant hunting online. Uh, and I will say, we've already gotten some support from the, uh, Maine Connectivity Authority. And we had a cop, essentially a advisory session with them and they think that there are opportunities that we can find. So I, I would like to think we'll make good use of, of that tool.
So we can check this, you could say, okay.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm about to put you on the spot. Do you know, I think?
So we have tests. I don't know.
We can find out. It's never your thing, so it may have been a while back, but.
What's the question?
Uh, M A N P, I think.
M P C, I think it's.
philanthropy center. Okay, then there's been association with nonprofits which has a link to M P C. So I'm thinking, and, and you have access to all kinds of resources for, for grants and everything else, so. I, I keep thinking in the back of my mind that it could have been four years ago and it hasn't been needed anymore, so.
Maybe we can track it down and come back to you if we need to.
I mean, it, $65 isn't that much, but I just hate to.
Yeah.
If we already have membership. If we already have membership. So.
It's Sammy Wright, Sammy Wright or Jane Rogers.
Okay.
Definitely be the.
Oh, we have two direct contacts.
Now, that's the one thing that she hasn't told me about all.
It's not ringing a bell, but it doesn't mean that it's.
So you'll remember it if we do need to come back to you just basically the, so, because we do, we do want to sort of move forward on funding these things and some of people.
Yeah.
So what is sixty-five dollars for membership again? What?
It's membership, uh, which essentially gives us two things. One is online access to a grant finding and development tool.
Okay.
Uh, the community essentially is housing. Uh, and the second one, probably the more valuable is there's a specialist there who uses it totally, uses it all the time. And getting their help or advice as far as finding grants, uh, and doing online applications is, uh, is what we're looking for.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's a useful tool for a lot of town committees. So we should just make sure we don't have it. And then if we don't, we should just.
Yeah.
And then all we need is the application form and something that I can pay based on and run by a selectman. So.
We can do that. So you're my point person on second one? I just wanted to talk to you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you, you submit it to me and then it has to be come before the site board to approve it before I can pay it.
Yeah. So if you give it to Carrie before, not this coming Thursday, but following Thursday.
Friday.
Technical about this. Essentially one, uh, purchases that membership online. So, uh.
If it's approved, I can use the debit card to do that.
Yeah.
But, um, I can only use the debit card after it's approved by the selectman.
I'm just worried about getting caught in this.
Is two weeks too long or?
I'll try anything. Uh, but, uh, the, I, the, the point being is I want to know who to call if I get stuck and feel like.
Either, either me or Carrie.
Okay.
Okay. So that's, that was my small, um, the four areas, as I mentioned, are the one that as Chuck has already spoken to, which is the network itself. Uh, the issue of devices, I would think is going to be important. And we assume that the partnership with the library is going to, is going, and I, I'm sort of asking for your support because this is new to the library. So the concept of what we're trying to do is one we're all sort of developing. I think it can directly benefit the library and certainly broadband. Also, I believe, the town IT. Um, so I'd just like to have your support for having that discussion. That's all. Probably I've had some of this all day.
Okay. To what? To talk with the library about these things or just to, in which way?
My assumption, and I'm pretty confident in this, is that the need for, uh, broadband support is not going to get smaller. I think from my own personal experience, we know that. Uh, and the question is, how does the town, the library and, uh, the broadband users also work, work together most advantageously? So really what I'm looking for is conversation.
Yeah.
That you would apply for grants potentially to gain access to devices that might be used by residents.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Wonderful. I, I have to speak up here for a minute. One of the things that I'm very concerned about having been through taking care of my mother and helping with some other people is that I'm very nervous about handing, you know, helping elderly people who have never used computers. Giving them something that's going to only make them even more vulnerable to scams. And I'm, I'm very concerned about that. So I hope that any, any big part of any in doing that, in giving people these devices and getting them connected includes like a command of course on what you should never do online and how to avoid it because I, I thank God that my mother never had a computer because she did enough damage just without one. Yes, she went through five hundred thousand dollars in three years. So.
So Carrie, are you saying that you think that, um, elderly people in town who have difficulty navigating through broadband? So I understand you say that.
I think that giving a computer or smartphone or anything to a person who has never used computers and hasn't grown up in the computer age.
Mm-hmm.
Don't, they don't realize how vulnerable it makes them.
Sure.
And, oh, Facebook, cool. I'll put in my whole life story and, and here's my PIN number to my bank accounts. I mean, it's just.
Just let me know. But we're really talking about two issues. The one is help in using it and the other is the avoidance of harm.
I want the avoidance of harm to be before helping them use it. That's something that I'm.
They kind of have to do them both at the same time because they can't avoid something unless they, it's like driving.
Yeah. So I'm not giving them a car and keys and.
What you don't go away, what you don't have to do is walk away from it. It really points to having a coach.
Yeah.
And that's why that digital navigator and the idea of pilot testing is critical.
Yes.
So I'm wondering if the aging in place committee can help with that somehow. Um, so right now, well, we've got to update things, but right now, um, each individual on a committee has a number of people that they're responsible for checking with. So if we left it that, if we did it that way, I don't think it'd be that overwhelming. Like I will take those three people. Um, that I'm responsible for, boy, at least one knows nothing about cell phones, computers, anything at all. And so if we break it down like that, and I would have the one, two, three people be my responsibility, once I learned what I was doing, um, you know, to walk through it. Do you think that would work?
Uh.
Or not?
I don't, I don't know. It's something about, I think it needs to really, because if you've never used a computer, you don't understand what it can expose you to.
Mm-hmm.
So it's really kind of like putting the fear of God, here are the matches, but you can get really hurt before they ever start to use it or turn it on.
With respect, the balance there because if you put the fear of God in their heart, then they never use any devices ever. And that's a way of getting the digital vibe larger.
True.
And that's why, again, I think the human component in there, doing the teaching, doing the coaching.
Yeah.
And doing the testing with the person, uh, is critical.
Yeah, maybe just a good opportunity for aging place and broadband and library to have a little, you know, joint representative meeting to talk through some other pilot plans. I think that'd be awesome.
Well, I'm on no cooties.
Yeah.
And we started having these conversations already and I'm delighted if they go forward, but I don't think go forward too far unless we have some success in front of it.
Yeah.
And so the idea of incremental movement forward, pilot testing, engaging people and have best to design it. I mean, it's not, this is not a quick fix. This is a slow build, as it were. But it's, uh, it's forward in its motion.
Well, we could have sessions, we could have sessions at the community center and, um, with all the broadband gurus could come and explain things to people. And then, um, for individuals who weren't able to get there, then we can rely on neighbors or having neighbors, um, to pick them up and bring them. Might give some people that way.
I, I might add, there's the opportunity here to have some intergenerational
Hmm, yes.
activity.
Yes, love it.
And, and this is why, again, the, the navigator, bringing these pieces together and letting the young teach the old, maybe go put these issues out. I think it's, it's a win-win.
One of the things that I would love to see is if we get to the place where we're going to be, um, oh, Carrie, here's a computer you can use or here's a smartphone or tablet. Before it's handed to me, eh, I think it should be kind of, I have to go through a course, like a certification, getting a driver's license or something.
Well, the good news though is that we're not the first with this problem. And this idea of bringing people up to speed safely, this is where I'm very impressed. You can find it online, National Digital Equity Center. Has, uh, nationally for quite a while. So as long as we keep listening to each other, I think we can build something that's, that's helpful. But it takes, takes.
Okay, we need to keep moving along, man.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Pat, did you have something?
What's that?
You had something?
Yeah, I do. I have two things. I, I, I don't see that, um, Dr. Criswell does not arrive.
She.
Supposed to come.
I think she had something going.
I think there is a, oh, she let you guys know she has a daughter? Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, she's got little kids and there could be a job. Let me just see if she, I think there's a work. Okay.
Baby to deliver.
Yeah. Can you play your poker so I can have another chance? Okay.
I'm just gonna try to get out of here.
Right. So the other thing I wanted to, um, have you guys bring me up to, they, with his, uh, social worker.
Yes.
Position, he can tell me what's.
Yep. I put an ad in the paper.
Oh.
And, uh, what, it went with that. Uh, it went in the paper two days ago, I think, and I got the one response so far.
Oh, okay. And add in which paper, Bob?
Uh, KJ.
Okay. And how long ago was that?
Uh, it went in on the twenty-third. And it'll be done on the thirtieth. Unless you're running another week. I'll, I'll see. If we don't, if we only get one person, we'll, we can run it another week.
Okay. And, um, were you planning on advertising it anywhere else?
The Winthrop advertiser doesn't come into town. No one in town gets it.
Yeah. Um. It's lost, I was gonna say.
As soon as she sends the application in, I'll send it over to you.
As, oh, the, oh, the, the, um, person who answered the ad.
Yep.
Okay. There was something I wanted to ask about the, yeah, I can't remember. Um. Okay. Daily Bulldog. I mean, I'm finding out that a lot of people read the Daily Bulldog. And I think, I think advertising in that is free.
Deal Bulldog.
I know what it was. Did we make the deadline for the newsletter?
Yes, we can put it in the newsletter.
Pardon me?
It can go in the newsletter.
Okay. I think that's a good idea. I mean, we're, you know, we're not looking just in Mount Vernon. I mean, you know.
Yeah, whoever, well, this person lives in town.
This person what?
Lives in town, but.
Okay, right.
Isn't the KJ, it could be anywhere.
Okay.
We'll see.
Do you have a help wanted section on the website?
Yes.
Put it up there?
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Al.
Yeah, I, I think it is, but I'm not sure. I'll have to check.
Okay. So it's going to run, um, it's going to run one week?
There isn't.
I don't believe, I don't believe that job posting is over.
Okay, I have to talk to the website guy. It's, it runs until Friday. So Friday, if I don't hear anything else.
I hear it.
It runs until Friday. So I can run it again another week if no one else advertise, uh, sends in an application.
Okay.
I'll see. Unless you like this application.
So what would you be comfortable with three app?
Yeah.
Um. I guess that's what we have. If that's what we had before. We may have had four.
Looking for, uh, this was aging, aging in place person, social worker, basically.
We re, we really do need one.
It's only fifteen hours a week, so.
What's that?
Fifteen hours a week, uh, month. Fifteen hours.
I know, I know. Well, at least we bumped the salary up to thirty dollars an hour instead of whatever embarrassing amount it was, but, um, but you're right. I mean, it's got to be a certain person that, um, that, that's going to be able to work those few hours. I mean, obviously you're not going to make a living.
Right. It, it has to be someone that's either retired.
Somebody maybe I'd call. It's okay to call somebody, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's not. Okay. Well, if you guys know of anybody you think would like to, uh, that's a social worker, not a licensed social worker. Uh, let me know.
Okay.
Okay. Um, all right. So you said Dr. Criswell was not going to be able to come?
No.
Right. Um. Information you gave me to give her, um, about registering herself as a, I've misplaced it. So I should probably just suppose she's not here, but I mean, I'll find it. It's just like, I got home so late that I couldn't spend too much time looking around, but I will find it.
Well, I emailed her a digital version.
Of the, uh.
From the state.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that's probably okay.
Okay.
But I can follow up with her and see if she's missing anything.
Okay. Can you email the, that to me also?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. There was, there was a lot, but there was a lot of redundancy, I thought. And but it looks as though it's something you have to do. The state says you will do this, right?
That's part of the officer.
Okay.
Committee. Yeah.
Wonder if we ever did that with Dan?
I would imagine he did.
Yeah. Okay. All right. You guys have any, um, questions for me about anything? Aging place, social workers, Dr. Criswell, rescue, shipment. Getting picked off left and right.
Oh, I know. It's rough out there.
Awful. I'm down to eight. I'm just devastated.
Oh, your chickens?
Yeah, yeah. I hate clothes. I mean, I'm not even letting them out with pen because I had two taken from the pen. So I have to do some securing before I do that, but.
A great peonies.
What's that?
You need a great peonies.
I need to what?
A great peonies.
Oh, no.
There you go.
Yeah, I know. Well, one, one, one of them ends up being a rooster and I've never kept a rooster before, but I think I will. And it's one of those small ones. It's one of the banners. You know, and I'm thinking, oh, this is going to be interesting. Cause I mean, some of the girls have gotten to be huge. So I'm hoping that. She's, her name is Spicy. So his name is Spicy. So I'm hoping that he will be spicy enough to chase the bad guys away. Kill for listening to my family. Appreciate it. You'll keep me informed?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. I'm gonna do ordinance review committee. You're up, Susan.
Okay. Do you want me to come up there or?
You can sit there or you can sit anywhere.
So I sent, um, the board an email and basically, um, my question is, what are our assignments for this year? The two that I am aware of, uh, appear to be pretty big. We typically don't start on ordinance review at the end of the year. We usually start in January.
Yeah.
Um, but if we are going to tackle, as I think we're going to have to, the new law, the new affordable housing law that was passed
Yep.
Um, last spring, which essentially is going to override some significant parts of our land use ordinance relating to how many dwelling units you can have on a lot and the whole accessory dwelling unit issue that we actually tackled two years ago. Um, that's essentially going to be overridden also effective July one of two thousand twenty-three. So we would need to get started on that. And, um, my understanding is that there are supposed to be resources available from the state, uh, either in the form of direct technical assistance or maybe grants to towns to do this. Um, my opinion is we're probably going to want to consult with professional help like KB Cog, um, or something like that.
We're having. We're having KB Cog come over here soon. Monday.
Oh, about this?
No.
Okay.
We wanna talk to all about possibly joining.
Okay, because.
That would be a good idea.
They, we, we actually consulted with them, although we didn't ultimately use them to do the comprehensive plan. And we were not members at that time, and they gave us, um, you know, they looked over our stuff and gave us a proposal. Um, when we did the wind ordinance, like.
Yeah.
I don't know how many years ago it was now, maybe almost ten. We used Fred Snow, who lives in Manchester. He was the chair of the planning board in Manchester for years, and he worked for KB Cog. Um, and at the time, we used him, we got permission from the select board, um, to use him, and he was, he helped us come up with the technical stuff on the wind ordinance that what, that ultimately did pass at town meetings. So I guess I thought it would, I was being proactive. I don't wanna wait until January to get started on this. And before I started, you know, reaching out to KB Cog or any news planners, I feel that that's, we would need the blessing of the select board, um, to do that. And if they're coming in to talk to you about other stuff.
Yep.
It might be a good time for that topic.
I didn't know, but we haven't pushed it, so we probably should push it.
So I did, um, contact MMA, um, just sent them an email because I, because of my husband's past affiliation with them. I know some people there and just asked whether they are going to have any resources available to towns, and the answer is yes. But typically, they don't actually help you write the ordinances. You know, they have a workshop.
Yeah.
Or, um, they have a handout, like the one that I sent you, that was something they can offer in June, but they're also a place that, we could maybe find some templates or something like that, because it's pretty complex. You know, with our village district where we have undersized lots anyway.
Right.
That's shoreline zoning. There's also shoreline zoning. Um, there's something in the law that says that the law doesn't override shoreline zoning. So you've got the law overriding the municipal ordinance, but to the extent the municipal ordinance is based on state shoreline zoning, that's mandatory. Then, so that's where I think we're gonna need some technical assistance.
Yeah.
Um, so I think that's a big project. So that, that's what, that was one of the reasons I sent the email. The other reason was we, our ordinance booklet is now three years, um, out of date. And last, I think it was last spring or maybe last winter, um, there was an error about, you know, are we gonna reformat this? Are we gonna change the numbering system? And that decision, I think, is deferred. Um, and if we're going to be moving to a whole new numbering system, gonna be, it's gonna be a very big project to reformat the ordinance.
Now, it's all done.
It's not all done. A bunch of numbers have been substituted for what we had, but it's not. There, it's gonna have to be proofread.
Right.
Line by line.
Yeah, absolutely.
So personally, um, you know, have an opinion, which I voiced, I'm not gonna repeat it, but the select board needs to make a decision which way they wanna go, and we, our committee will, you know, will do what needs to be done. Either way, um, the ordinance needs to be recodified. So, um, and that's also gonna be a big job. So between the two of them, um, I think our work's cut out for us.
Right.
And so the reason why I asked for this meeting was to get direction.
Well, I also have.
Have, I just want to make sure you guys know I have Heather Roberts and Michelle Pino from our committee here.
So we also need to have the dog ordinance look at. It's not a priority, but it really should be. It's, it's from the nineteen seventies, right?
No, it's not from the nineteen seventies. It's, it's pretty recent, actually. We did that, not that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We couldn't find it.
Well, we did it.
If you can find it.
I, I'm sure I have it.
Okay.
It's not a land use ordinance, so it would not be in the.
So it doesn't have to be. Oh, okay. No, it was a, it was a separate one.
Yeah.
I found the dog's ordinance, but it was, it was even earlier than that, nineteen.
No, there's a new animal control ordinance that we did.
I didn't find it anywhere.
Well, so it's not that long ago. I have it. I have copies of it.
Yeah.
The town clerk should have copies of everything that we passed at town meeting.
Yeah.
In the mall somewhere.
I checked with them. What I had to talk to them for. As long as somebody's got a copy of it.
Um, the, the opinion on the numbering. The way this is right here, it's, it's in our computer, but every one of these would have incorporated into this ordinance.
No, well, it's already, those are already, those are already in there. The last three years is what's not there.
Okay.
And I have already sent you guys the last three years worth of amendments. I sent them to.
They're in a reformat.
Oh, they are, okay.
They're, they're not all in the reformat, because what was done most recently at town meeting is not in. But I've already sent it to you.
Yeah.
After town meeting, I sent it to you.
Yes, we have it.
So you do have it.
Yeah, I guess my question is the, the housing law seems like a big lift.
It is.
This year, and I'm wondering, like, can we just use the copy you sent to print out a fresh one, or does it, does that need a little renumbering? Like, do we have to, do we have to do?
Well, there are, um, in a perfect world, in a perfect world, which we all have, um, it would be a good idea, no matter what format, um, you decide to do, to go through the whole ordinance and make sure that everything is up to snuff. What I did, I don't know if you remembered this, but there was a housekeeping article on the board.
Right, right.
Um, and that was a partial redo. I found paragraphs that were, you know, had the same numbers, one after the other. There was a chart, I think it was the road chart, that left off a column. I don't know how, how many codifications are now, but we found that like the back lot driveway specifications had been left off somehow. Things like that, um, should be done, but we've, you know, we've used this ordinance, I think, pretty well, the way it is. It is in the format now that most ordinances are in. Um, most ordinances are not numbered, you know, with, you know, as many as like six or seven numbers, like, like some of the numbering, it's like seven point thirteen, point two, point one, point five, point six.
Right.
Most ordinances are not like that.
We, we agreed to not do it quite that far, but.
But, but some ordinances are a combination where you have numbers, and then once you get to like maybe two, you go to letters and then numbers. And so it's, it's, it's easier to find things. I mean, I, I certainly understand that people have a hard time navigating it, because it's just, it's com, it's a complex document. But the way it is set up is, in, in my experience, the way most offices, most municipal ordinances are done. You know, if Portland or, you know, some of the bigger, um, it's, it's, it's more, there's more numbers. Numbers. But Gardner has numbers up to like maybe two, and then it goes to letters and then numbers. I know, it probably doesn't make any sense the way I'm referring to it, but um, the, the way, um, the way the reformatting was set up, it's all numbers. There's no letters. And the way this is formatted is more like state statutes. Um, you have a section number, and then you have a capital letter. And then if you, then if you wanna do subsections, you go to little numbers, and you go to non-capital letters. And you indent so that you can tell where some things are subpart of, of something. But one of the things that was really good about the reformatting was there's an index that's wonderful, and we should, we should keep that. Um, and then the other thing that was done that was really good was that the way the pages are numbered. Each, um, section, like right now, we have, I think, eleven sections. But in the reformat, and each section had its own a change to section three, which is the definition section, and we often additions, and you change the page numbers. You don't have to change the whole ordinance. So it saves on, you know, labor of, of repaginating and keep all that stuff.
I, I think, stop me if I'm wrong, but I think indexing is contingent on formatting, because a lot of times, if, if you don't have it so that it automatically updates the index, you, your index gets out of sync, because, oh, I'm adding this, this, and this, as you redo ordinances. And if it's not automatically keeping up to the indexing, I think that, I think that was one of, and I wasn't involved, but I think that was one of the things about the reformatting, is that it has, the indexing is automatic.
I, I don't know. I, I can't imagine that you couldn't index it in the way our current ordinance is formatted.
You can index it any way you want, but for the index to be automatically updated by whatever, um, software you're using to do it, whether it's Word or, or Microsoft or whatever.
I was using Word. I'm not sure how it would. I, I don't know the answer to that, but I kind of doubt it. Um.
Okay, cause I, I've never worked with any software that, unless you follow prescribed keying of the indexing, it can update automatically. So that's, I'm just saying that, that's one of the things, because you like the index, but in making the decision, I think that's one of the things to be aware of.
I'm not a computer expert, but I can't imagine that you can't have an index.
I don't think it's automatic. You have to actually go to table of contents and select index. But it's based on the header level, and the header levels are numbers. So I don't know, but maybe there's a way to do it without line format, like you're saying.
Well, all I can say is the main state statutes are indexed. I don't know how we do it. But they don't have that number, it's just like.
My question is, right now, just to do the basics, what you have to do to, to get this in line with what the state is, is, is that gonna take most of your time up?
I don't know, because I don't.
Yeah, I mean, when you read what the changes are that the state is requiring, there are any number of places in our current ordinances where we need to identify the conflict. So it looks to me like we're just gonna have to go through it. You know, the sections, obviously, where it would apply, but it's gonna be pretty meticulous to then identify where the conflicts are. I mean, that's off the top of my head, but there's a lot of them.
You can use a search of word defined.
Oh, he was, right, but it's, it's, you know, it's.
What you're gonna have.
You still.
It's like. It's more, um, conceptual, I think, than finding search terms. I mean, we know, you know, we have different districts. We have different land use districts. We have different, requirements in each district. And, um, like for instance, in the growth areas in town, we have two. We've never done any performance standards, but under this statute in the growth district, if you have a lot that has no, um, dwelling, dwelling units on it, you have to allow up to, I believe you have to allow four dwelling units per lot. So right now, we have
Two acre?
To a two acre lot. Right now, we have two acre, two acres and two hundred feet of road frontage is our minimum lot size in Mount Vernon. The way this law is written in your growth areas, and we have two, um, you have to allow four on lots that don't have any dwelling units. The issue that I have with that is it doesn't really say, like, how you define those lots, like, is it two acres divided by four and two hundred feet divided by four? So you could have road frontage of fifty. I just don't know. No, and I'm not sure, you know.
Where, where are the growth areas?
The growth areas are, um, across from Flying Pond.
And then up by, they're the, where Potter Oil used to be.
Up by the pallet metal and we picked areas that were, are, already had some more commercial, um, use. And that was like twenty, thirty years ago, just a while ago. So we, we would have to go to each district and figure it out. So it's not so much finding the terms as it is, you know, the concepts, and that's where I think, um, we're gonna need some help from. Whether it's KB Cog or DECD or MMA or a private land use planner.
Yeah. Um.
Are you, are you going to have a lot against, I mean, some of the language of, I think it was all in two thousand and three?
It is chapter six seventy-two. Here's the law.
Yeah, I bet it was.
No, the two thousand and three. Yes, it was the old.
It was, cause I actually testified against it.
Okay.
Um, the, the thing that appears to me is that it completely negates letting small municipal communities do, do anything.
Well, it certainly, it certainly overrides our, you know, what we chose to do.
Yeah.
Over the years.
So any, is there anything you can do to counteract that, to say, no, we don't want that. We want this instead?
Um, as far as I can see, we have to comply by July first.
Sure, yeah.
So, so what that means, I, you know, that's where we need to get some.
But comply is basically just saying, yeah, you can do anything you want.
Conceptual things about how to divide and how it all works. So is there anything you need from us to get started? Any emails we should write or things we should try to research?
Okay, with us getting in touch with KB Cog? And just finding out what they could do, and if we're thinking of joining anyway, that might make the discussion even easier. Um, I know that when we talked with them about the comprehensive plan, and this was not ordinance review, it was comprehensive plan committee. Um, you know, they gave us and I believe it did not require us to join necessarily, but they would do it for us to be.
Yeah.
I think if we were a member, the theme would be adjusted downwards.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, you know, that's your decision, but if you're okay with us doing that, um, we could get started on that, and, you know, another thing you could do, if you didn't wanna make a decision yet on the formatting, um, is we could just stick with our current format for now and, um, create up a new booklet. I just feel that it's hard for people to know what the ordinances are when it's not all in one place. Like you said, you can't find the animal control ordinance. If someone wanted to look and find the solar farm ordinance that we passed, where are they gonna find it? Cause it's not in the book. Two years ago, the accessory. Two years ago, the accessory dwelling ordinance, it's not in the book. And it's not online.
There's one other thing that might be coming up is there, the planning board is having an issue. With um, actually the. The application got ta- taken back, dropped. But they may have an issue. That should be coming to you guys. So I'll, I'll just make sure that that gets sent to you.
Okay.
It's, it's not gonna be a major thing.
Okay, but.
But other than that, I think you should be putting all your time into that and. If, if we have more time in the year, we'll. We'll deal with that. I could care less whether you go with this format or the one.
It's like your decision.
But where I'll make that decision is based on what um, the planning board and CEO say. They're the ones that have to deal with it. Not me. So.
That's fine.
That's where I'll make my decision.
That's fine.
I feel like there's, I feel like there's plenty on their plates. No need to add anymore.
So I will find out if there are any, there might be grants through DECD. Because I know there's nothing budgeted. And at the time, we didn't even know. I guess we did know. There's, you know, there's no budget. And hopefully, you know, the technical assistance would include some sort of financial. Help with um, planning.
Uh, members, do you need any more members?
Um, we, I actually had someone that asked me. She told me she wanted to be a member. I will email her information.
Cause I may have a couple of names that.
Um, we have. We have a pretty good group. Yeah, I was thinking six. Brad, Quinn, me. So we have six right now. You know, if people want, if people are interested, I would not discourage people from. Being on it. The, the woman who approached me said, oh, I remember you from town meeting, oh. Going on and on, and she seemed really interested, so I said I would, I, I would send you her name. Cause some years we don't, we, we don't have a lot of interest, so I think it's a good thing. Alright, so we have green light to go ahead and start on affordable housing.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
For our committee. Let us know what you need.
I will, I will, I will, um, I will call them. Who is the person that's coming to talk with you, do you know?
Uh, Sierra, Jessica, Jessica, Jessica's here.
Jessica's here.
She's new with them.
Would it make sense for me to ask for her?
Yeah, I would.
Okay. Excellent. Well, that's kind of good timing. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Wanna get a little thing on the Castle Island Bridge?
We met with the uh, Maine DOT uh, at the uh. Bridge site and uh, basically they're going to be putting. Uh, the replacement bridge uh, out to bid at the end of September, early October. Um, they are expecting to have the entire project done by Memorial Day of next year. Uh, they said that they have to have all the water related work done by April. Due to environmental rules of working in the water. Uh, the road will be entirely closed. Until probably April, when there will be, or they expect that there will be. And opened. Um, but then the paving. Uh, on both sides of the bridge will happen uh, as soon as the weather is warm enough that they can actually do paving. But again, the expectation is that the, the bridge. Well, it'll be open and functional by uh, Memorial Day.
When are they close?
As soon as they um, get a bid in and the contractor decides when that's gonna happen. It could be as late as January.
Hey, what really is bad from that side of town is that anywhere you go. Are a lot longer, but also like up Watson Pond Road. That is not a good road in the winter. Cottle Hills closed in the winter, I mean, just.
Of course, I, I rolled on Castle Island my first winter. Right in front of the foundation. So it's not.
It, it's not the greatest road, but it's better than Watson Pond Road. Watson Pond, no, it, when they plow it, it's all shade, so it's all ice. So that's not an option. So to, to go to one of my clients up in Waterville, I end up going basically down to Manchester. And then up ninety-five.
Yeah, so, yeah. I know, it's gonna be painful.
One good thing is that it's gonna be fairly quick.
Yeah, it's kind of a quick timeline. Terms of road construction.
I, I understand because of Castle Island, Travis knows there's some commercial concerns, but for residents, it would have been a whole lot better to. Have it closed during the summer versus the winter having to go these obscure routes.
Just gotta add a quick thing that you've done on the castle.
Yeah, and the only other pieces that uh, Belgrade is gonna try to get some erosion control.
Yeah, that's right, some erosion. Existing erosion that they wanna get. Added to that.
It wasn't clear that uh, Maine DOT has the funds to be able to do that, so I think that's still an open.
I kind of like.
Uh, just a quick one on the. The uh. Drainage. At the fire station, we did get a uh, return email from the DOT. They wanna meet with us Monday morning at ten. Did I get that right?
Oh, Monday. October third, uh, one.
One o'clock. So either one of you are available, you can come. Okay, transfer station. Bunch of issues, not necessarily related to uh. Transfer station. We were audited by risk management. MMA. And basically, they told us we have to have the safety. Manuals for each department. For instance, um. Lockout, tag out. Respirator program. Boiler control plan, oh, bloodborne. Uh, confined space. A lot of these are fire departments, but a lot of them relate to even here. Library, community center, and. Lee. We don't have a road committee. But Lee is uh. Right, as a town employee, his manager. So he has to be considered that way, so he has come under the same thing. He has to have a set of manuals also. Um, I talked with um. I talked with, uh, I went over to Belgrade and they uh, they have a set of these manuals. For each place. Lynn Martin did these for them. Uh, it's fairly expensive, probably, probably get a couple thousand dollars. But each. There'll be a set for this building, there'll be a set for the library. Uh, she said, um. She's pretty sure she did it for the fire department here, but it was quite some time ago and probably would need to be redone. She's willing to come up and talk with us. But it probably shouldn't be at a select one's meeting because she would want. Um, someone from each department, someone from the dome. Lee, someone from the library. So we should have a department head. Here at, I would suggest that we do it, say, next Monday night. Does that sound reasonable? We could post it as a, an agenda. Uh, and she would be, she would come up. And basically give us feel on what she would do for the town. Now, she came up, um. Actually, the weekend. Before I went over to talk to Belgrade. And she comes up once a year and basically gives a safety meeting to all their employees. And that takes it right away from, you don't have to have a safety. Manager or something like that. But it makes, you know, you have these, all these manuals, but who reads them, you know? That one of them here is, is a safety manual. It's just. It's almost like a hundred pages. So why have something when you're not gonna go through it?
You know, there is a safety manual.
That one.
Really?
An MMA is.
And he put it on the side and says, that's not what I want.
That's what they directed.
Thought we asked at that point.
Can't you just copy what for the respirator and that? Can't you just copy what the fire department already has?
No, she's, she's saying that it's outdated too.
Well, couldn't you just take it and update it, I mean?
Yeah, that's what she would do. She would come in, she would update all of. The fire department wants, because right now, they're the only one that has them. Rescue has them.
Would be a lot of effort to do.
Well, she has these boil plates already. She's not come up with the figures. Listen and see what, what it is.
And she's from MMA?
No, she's an independent contractor.
See, I follow, MMA gave me.
We got, we got.
What they wanted.
Fee reduction because. Their program and had the manuals and everything.
Well, you don't get a fee reduction this year. They're going up. Because we don't meet.
We have ten percent of this, you know, because of that.
And so a year later, they're saying.
They wanted.
Because they gave us that.
Yeah.
Well, this, this is what they sent me, just all the manuals, and they said, that's what you have to have.
So. Why don't you ask them why we didn't have that in last year?
Yeah, they, they told me exactly what they wanted and showed me where to get the samples, so.
Belgrade had all of these. It was, I looked at Kenny's, and that's what, what he had. Transfer station.
I know, I don't mean to give you a hard time, but I'm just so confused because. I wasn't involved, but the town jumped through hoops, getting the safety committee together and everything else. And they gave us their blessing and gave us a report card.
You, you have to do what was being done. The committee was all, uh, was collecting um, this data, which was a check sheet.
A check sheet.
You know, but. The other part is you have to have, you have to have a manual that says confined space entry. Now, that's only for fire department.
Right.
Maybe.
Right.
But then you have to have bloodborne.
That was all part of.
No, bloodborne is every single building. Right?
Right, someone can get hurt at any. Anywhere, yeah.
You know, some of these are everywhere, so.
Between that FEMA LD two thousand and three.
That's only part of the problem. The next part comes up where a person almost fell. Into one of the tops. What happened was, he got his leg. In the lower, the street chains. He got it into the first chain. And then he started reaching over and the top chain had slack, they all, the chain, so they have slack. Almost went in. I was there. And I caught him. And Lou was there and he helped, and we got him back out. He wouldn't have gone far because the top was almost full, but still. He could have been cut or. He was frail anyways.
What's the solution?
Okay, so I called risk management. What they recommended, and that's exactly what I would have said too. I went down to, to Reed Field and looked at what they have. They have those full rails all through, no chains. They said, get rid of those chains. But what you can do is you could put gates. You can buy these uh, gates that tractor supply. You can swing in gates. That way our attendant can open the gates. Let them do their dumping and then close the gates. But most of the time, it's just the individual and the gate can be closed.
Yeah, that, I mean, I read that suggestion, that seems to make sense.
It costs money. There is. There is money available, and I'll have to check through to find out. Um, Lynn Poole was the one that did the last job. Uh, working on that. There's some broken cement pieces there and. It's gonna have to be some work done, so. I'll check on where we can find money too. There's also a few on the recycled shit. Yes. That's it on that. On the transfer station. Oh, George is out.
Actually, in some ways that, that would be really bad because if you got paid a paycheck. Actually, in some ways that, that would be really bad because if you got paid a paycheck, it might affect. What the state is picking up from medical.
So schedule some, so we should assist them.
Which, we're in a very published.
Yeah.
No, no, I just wanted.
Oh, uh, I wanted to accept Patricia Jackson's resignation from the board of, uh.
Uh, we need a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept her resignation with regret.
With regret, I second.
Uh, Dunn's Corner Road, I didn't get the exact time, but will be closed for three days, three to four days. He has to change, uh, Lee has to change a three-foot culvert.
Oh, right, right, yeah.
Uh, he'll have a sign at both ends, but maybe the thirty-four that listen. Tell all the people. Uh, oh, this came up. Maybe you could help me with this. Okay. Anyone over sixty-five that also has the homestead exemption. Can get the frees on their taxes. When they sell the property. Will they have to pay any of it back, like, uh, family and a tree grow? Uh, are you sure?
Yes, because you can also take it, then the new person would go up to the new buyer if they're not. Covered under it, that's the gray area, but, um. The property, if I bought your house, the property tax would go up to your normal, the normal amount. You would not. The town would not pay anything back. The per, you, you as the seller would not pay anything back on that.
So does it, does it freeze it at the same level each year if you renew?
Same, same level as you're paying.
It never goes up if you.
Right.
Renew it on time.
However, if the tax ever goes down.
You get the benefit.
You get the benefit, right.
If for some miraculous reason.
Right.
The taxes on your house went down.
And you've got a perpetual rental to have your property for ten years.
For a home, uh, homestead, yes.
You have to have it as your primary residence for ten years.
For ten years.
Now, if you move to another town in Maine, and this is the gray area that they haven't defined, you, you are still. You're able to carry a freeze with you. Now, if I moved to another town, I would probably be downsizing, so I'm not sure how that would work. Cause you're freezing a monetary value, so that's.
What a computer nightmare that's gonna be.
Trio is doing a special class to figure out whether they should hold in conjunction with MMA.
But they can back out of it at any minute if they decide it's not profitable.
Yep, they, they have only agreed to fund it a hundred percent to municipalities for the lost revenue for this year. Every year they have to vote on it and it's quite likely to go the way of homestead exemptions and that they'll fund part of it. Hmm, yeah. But that's just.
Someone from, uh, Kenbeck Land Trust would like to have their information on our website. If you would like to give them a call.
Sure.
Uh, three, seven, seven, two, eight, four, eight. Um, Krish, uh, it's K E.
Teresa, Teresa.
Krishna, Teresa?
Teresa.
Yes, you're right. Hmm. Oh. Scott Herrick didn't come in. He was supposed to give us names for the appeals board.
He sent it to me by email.
But did he give it to us?
It by email, yes.
Hmm, let me pull it up.
He didn't say who was on the alternates.
I don't recall, he said who the alternate would be.
Let's see.
We need to know the alternate.
I mean, right now, we're down three people.
Right.
So these three would be all just replacing them, right?
Right.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
So not alternates, okay. Um, do we want a motion to accept their.
Yep.
Their appointment?
Yeah.
I have the names here in front of me from Scott. Thank you, Scott. Okay, I will motion that we add, uh, Jamie Clef, Paul Crockett and Peter Lewis.
Yep.
To be appeals for.
You need to have the appointment form, the ballot for each of those.
We will.
Well, that's, you guys sign it in this meeting. When we look through it.
We will. We have a lot, yeah.
Who's the last person, sorry?
Uh, Peter Lewis.
Okay, I have, uh, one applicant. Uh, asked for a, uh. Application for the administrative assistant so far. Okay, and next week, uh, next meeting we'll, uh, close roads to our winter maintenance.
You have here set up the governance committee, don't we already have that?
We are going to do that, yeah.
Don't we already have one set up?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, I should have thought so.
Yeah, we should have grabbed her. Move that to next.
Next week, yeah, next time.
Yeah, I think it's giving you the points.
Yeah, because I've got Aaron Beals, Kathy Jacobs. Two. Yeah, we'll move that to the next time. Thanks for saying that. Okay, Kenny Ferrin's already on that. Oh, I wanted to see, check with, uh, Mike Smith. He's trying to get you on that too. You don't have to write that one down. Um, I'm asking the sheriff to set up a temporary speed, speed sign on the wingsmill room. Near the Dunn's Corner, four way.
Do we need to coordinate timing with the Dunn's Corner X?
Yeah. Let's see if we can slow them down a little bit on that road. And that's. That's it. So.
You've got everything on my list, Bob.
Really?
Yeah, job.
Um, I talked to you about what I wanna do. Is that possible for me to turn in wages?
Um, yes.
Uh. Paper.
Oh, thanks for that.
Did you want this stuff here to go on, on the web?
It wasn't the last time I checked, but I need a physical copy.
You need a what?
Physical copy of those.
Physical copy.
Of all the meanings that we have.
You can't print them all from the website? You can't.
For the videos and minutes. I think Mark can get the videos.
Yes.
He's got all those. There's only a few that are on YouTube. He has archived, but not anywhere. Or we have that system. Last time I checked, it wasn't any even minutes or agendas online.
Not true.
The last time I checked.
When, when was it?
Yeah. A little over a week ago.
Oh, they're definitely, they're under documents, uh.
I went.
Support and feels, or I'm sorry, uh, meeting nights or agenda.
Okay, and I went to documents, this completely blank.
You do have to, um, open up to, uh. Listed by year, so you have to go to twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, it didn't show anything. It's completely blank.
Okay. No, I haven't moved.
Oh.
Um, you gotta, I'm gonna need you on my computer.
You want me to look on yours?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, that.
It's been up there for a few weeks.
Well, please just tell them before you put them out.
Maybe.
I don't know.
Twenty-six. Time flies when you're having fun.
Even when you're not.
It does for both of us.
Um, what, Jen?
I'll motion to adjourn.
Second, second, eight forty-two.
All right, goodbye, everyone on the internet. Bye, Mark.